...meeting notices?
Yes, it was noticed at City Hall. Dave's Ace Hardware in Pigly Woodley.
Okay. At this time we have public comment regarding items which can be affected by council action, and people should have signed in. So we're calling people up to speak in the order that they signed in. Brad? I'm not sure, Brad, okay. Why don't you come up for us, you can give us your name, why don't you come to the mic?
Good evening. I'm Brad Womarts. I'm one of the directors of the Maple Beach Property Holders Association, and new, first time here, and new to the position. And I just wanted to make myself available in the event that one of our residents came up and had any comments. And that's all, I don't see him here today, so that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Maxine Striegel?
Well, I just signed it because if I want to say something later, I want to be able to talk.
Okay, okay.
I don't understand, I mean, this is the most people I've seen for a long time. Normally, I'm the only citizen sitting here. And I just, my question is, what if I come in late and I didn't get the sign that paper? You've already done five of them, that means I can't say anything.
No. No, I would just, they would just have to approach me.
We would let you talk, Maxine.
And just so we're clear-
This is still a public meeting.
And just so we're clear, the sign-in sheet is only for this portion of the agenda. The sign-in sheet doesn't affect public hearings. Everybody's allowed to speak in a public hearing. So the sign-in sheet-
I'm not talking about public hearings.
Right, so that it wouldn't change.
Okay, just for clarification, if somebody wanted to speak on an item that's further down in the agenda that the council is taking action on, so not in this portion, but further down, do they sign the sign-in sheet?
If you haven't signed the paper, you can't talk.
Right.
Mark, you look like you have something to say.
Well, on items that are on the agenda, further down, that are not under public comments, and not, where there's not a public hearing, it's in the discretion of the mayor or the acting mayor as to whether there are any comments from the audience or public are allowed. They're not, they don't have any right to make any statements during the agenda items other than public comments or public hearing.
But would we, if they wanted to, would they sign in beforehand to speak later?
As I understand, well, as I've indicated, even if they want to speak on an item on the agenda other than public comments and public hearing, they don't have any right to do so. That's purely in the discretion of the mayor, or in this case, the acting mayor. And so, then, in that case, if someone wanted to speak on an item under New Business, then the acting mayor would, could, if he wished, allow them to do so regardless of whether they signed in. This is, this is just a, as I understand it, this is a procedural item that was put into place to facilitate probably the clerk knowing who is making public comments, and that's it. It's just a procedural thing.
Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, down to new, we'll get down to New Business. I think for the council to act intelligently, if there's other ideas from citizens in the room, they should be able to bring them up. We've never, we've never foretold that before, and maybe because we haven't, we've gotten some good ideas that we've been able to learn. I don't want to do anything to discourage participation in attendance at council meetings. If the citizens feel that they don't have any voice, even if they come to a meeting, they're not going to come to the meeting. I understand that you don't want a free-for-all, and ongoing discussions that last for hours, but with the way it was presented to me by the mayor, this is the way Janesville operates, and this is the way Madison operates, but we're not Madison, we're not Janesville. Janesville's ten times the size we are, as many more council people, and probably a lot more attendance at council meetings. We're still a small city, we all know each other, and yet we can't stop for a minute and get a listen to an idea from the audience. We're not doing our job.
I tend to agree with you, Dave, and as Mark said, being the acting mayor tonight, I can accept people commenting on something, and I certainly will do that. I can't speak for our mayor, he's not here, but if I'm running the meeting tonight, if somebody has a comment to make, I certainly am going to accept that comment.
Could we, under the new item, could we just maybe ask that this particular subject be put on the agenda for the next council meeting so that we can have a general discussion about it?
Well, you know, Linda, if, you know yourself, before you got back on the council, you would speak up when you saw an issue that needed to be addressed in wheelers.
Oh, yeah.
There's no reason, if you're scheduled to take action on item 4A tonight, and somebody comes up with an idea that enhances the ability to make that decision, that you shouldn't take it that night and make the decision. Transferring it to another meeting now online in two weeks doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, and it's not that I don't want to have this conversation, because I do think it's important, and Dave, actually, if you remember, there were a lot of times that I sat in the audience waiting in order to be called on and was not able to speak. So I can totally relate to what Maxine is saying, however, it's not listed as an agenda item, so I'm looking at Mark, wondering if we can have this discussion, or if we have to wait until we get it on the agenda, because I do think we need to talk about it.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, I misconstrue what you're saying. You want to look at this policy as an agenda item?
Most definitely.
Because this wasn't a policy that we voted on as a city council? Is it my understanding that it was something that the mayor implemented?
Yes.
Just for clarification, okay.
I agree.
Well, I want to be clear tonight, if people want to speak on an issue, they can, if it's in my discretion. So it's a moot point on whether we implement this tonight or not, because I'm going to allow people to comment. So we have another person signed up to speak, Tina Thompson. Tina, would you like to speak?
Hello, everyone. Tina Thompson, 229 North Janesville Street. I'm the current owner of the Caddyshack and Gophers, and I'm speaking on the first agenda item in regards to us being granted a grandfathered liquor license as opposed to the $10,000 reserve one. The reason I'm asking for it is just the fact that that $10,000 is kind of always a difficult thing to come up with. We're in the process of getting new owners in there, and if that were to happen again as we own the property, and if we were to re-lease it, that $10,000 is always difficult to come up with. I'm asking for the license from Liberty Station. They've been closed for over two years, and they've been holding on to that license. So basically, I would want theirs, they can have mine, I'm not going to, you know, they'll still be able to open the same way. They would just have the reserve license, and I know you have to sell, 50% of your sales have to be something other than liquor and beer, and since they're a restaurant, I don't see that that would be a problem either. So that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the third item on the agenda, which is the amended presentation of the 2014 YMCA Sponsor of the Year Award to the City of Milton. Tom, you want to come up?
I'm going to turn this off, that's okay, because...
Yeah, we don't want you to blow the people out.
The old coach is still in me, so it's, how about you stand over here? Air Products, Steve Dunkel from the Diamond Center, and Dan Hano from the Bank of Milton is not able to attend, they are members of the executive committee for the YMCA. Real quickly, real short, each year in the last 10 years, the YMCA takes the time to recognize individuals, organizations, who helped the Y move forward, whether it be financial, support, community support, and a number of different aspects. The Y's organization mission is to build strong kids, families, and communities. We received donations, support from hundreds of individuals, organizations, foundations, and community support. This recognition, Don, tonight, to the council is really a summary of eight years. If you go back to 2006 and the purchase of the land at Crossridge Park, with the park where Y stands today. The City of Milton, through several mayors, several councils, elected officials, and generous community support through the years of that years, made that Y possible here in Milton in November 2013. We want to recognize the City of Milton with a formal presentation tonight, take a picture if you would, and thank you all for the city staff, for your support, not only in the past, but currently as well, as we opened in 2013, our first year, our anniversary was this last couple of weeks. It's been very successful, and we want to recognize the City of Milton as our 2014 Community Development Sponsor of the Year Award to the City of Milton. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the City of Milton, Tom, thank you very much. Do you want all the council members to come here?
Yeah, yes, and everybody, if they've got time for that, or-
Yep.
May I come to center here if you would?
Sure, we always like photo ops.
Do we want to gather around the phone that Dave's on? Sorry, Dave.
I'll just create a background anyway.
We have a warrant outside the project, maybe it wasn't you, there was someone, so I don't know how you want to center this.
Down.
But- Don't stand behind me, we won't be able to see you. So if we get everybody in, we've got camera people coming in. How are you doing, okay?
There we go.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. We move on to item five, New Business. Discussion and possible action on the revocation of a Class B alcohol license for Liberty Station Enterprise, Buckaroo's Barbecue at 231 Front Street, one attachment. I'm going to have our city administrator talk about this, it was discussed, Personnel and Finance Committee tonight, so Al, you want to take this over?
Sure. For the group, for the background of the group, we had a public comment from Ms. Thompson about this item on the agenda, and this item was placed on the agenda because there is an alcohol permit that's currently a Class B license that's held by Buckaroo's. They have been out of operation for approximately two years plus. The council has the discretion, based on the ordinance, to revoke a license that is not being used, that has not been utilized within a year. Mr. Clegora came and spoke to Personnel and Finance and indicated that he is in the process of reopening. We do know that he has passed all of his occupancy inspections, alcohol permit inspections, and fire department inspections, and he has agreed to reopen by January 1st of 2015. At the Personnel and Finance Committee, the group made a motion to allow Mr. Clegora to continue to hold his license as long as he demonstrates that he is open by January 1st of 2015. So with that being said, from the larger, the council has the final authority and final discretion on this item, so based on the information that was presented to Personnel and Finance, based on the information that was forwarded to the council by Personnel and Finance, the council now holds the discretion to begin the revocation process of Buckaroo's license, or to go along with the recommendation of the Personnel and Finance Committee to allow the owner of Buckaroo's to continue to hold that license under the understanding that he will be open by January 1st of 2015.
Any discussion on this item?
I will make a motion to continue the license from Liberty Station on basis that they open January 1st.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Now, before we vote, Linda is going to have a question before Dave made the motion, so Linda, I'll take your question first.
I was just wondering if you could go over the difference between those two licenses?
Sure. There's, by state law, there in essence is really three licenses that can be issued by a community. First is a Class A license. A Class A license are those licenses which alcohol is sold at a retail level, at a convenience store, at a liquor store, things of that nature. Then there is a Class B license, and within the Class B license, there's two differentiations. There's a Class B beer and wine, and there's a Class B liquor license, and those are typically found at bars and restaurants. Within the Class B, there is a grandfathered license, and that's the meat of the discussion this evening. There's a certain number of grandfathered licenses that are available to a community based on its population as of the date of December 1st, 1997. That, for the City of Milton, is nine. Based on a population equation, after December 1st of 1997, the city is then able to issue what is known as reserve licenses. In the case of Ms. Thompson who spoke earlier, her business, Caddyshack or Gophers, has a reserve license. In the case of Liberty Station, they have a grandfathered license. The differentiation between those two licenses is, a reserve license requires a $10,000 deposit, for lack of a better term, or a $10,000 fee that the council accepts, and then generally by city ordinance refunds to that entity after a month of showing good standing by showing that they have a certain percentage of alcohol sales versus food sales. Those folks who hold a Class B grandfathered license do not have to have that $10,000 down payment or deposit, however you want to refer to it as, nor do they need to meet that threshold requirement. So it is advantageous for a property owner or a business owner to have that grandfathered license, because they don't have to come up with the $10,000 right off the bat. So in the case that we're looking at this evening, Buckaroo's does have a grandfathered license, Gophers has a reserve license, and what Ms. Thompson is referring to is that she would like the new business owners to have one of those grandfathered licenses so they don't have to come up with the $10,000. So that's, as confusing as it sounds, that is the crux of the conversation. That's what led us to this point. This evening's discussion solely focuses around whether the council would like to start the revocation process for Buckaroo's, or allow Buckaroo's to continue holding that license as mentioned in the motion by Alderman Adams.
So the grandfathered licenses, those would be the licenses that were given before 1997?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those, the motion, if the motion was to follow the action of the Finance, Personnel and Finance Committee?
Sure.
Okay, so, all those in favor of following the action of Personnel and Finance Committee? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. I lost my iPad here, so. All right, so we will move on then to item B of New Business, Preliminary Resolution 2014-25 Vacating a Portion of Chicago Street, CTHM, two attachments. Al, would you like to explain?
Yeah. This item before you tonight is a preliminary resolution that will allow the formal vacation of what was formerly the County Truck Highway M in its previous alignment, which now doesn't exist. The pavement is no longer there, that roadway formerly bisected what is now known as Crossroads Park. In order to actually vacate that, though, we need to start this formal process by approving this preliminary resolution this evening, which will allow us to legally vacate that right-of-way, thus creating the development parcel that will house the QuickTrip development. So this is really a formal action that is somewhat of a housekeeping matter, but is a legal matter and a legal necessity in order to create that land division, to create that development lot. What will follow with this, with the passage of this preliminary resolution, is there will be a public hearing at the December 9 Plant Commission meeting, and then there will be an additional public hearing at the January 6, 2015 City Council meeting, in which the council can then take formal action to formally vacate that right-of-way. So this is a necessary legal process that has a state noticing requirement, that's why we have to start this process with a preliminary resolution.
So do we need a motion on this, Al?
Yes.
Would anybody like, need more discussion? Anybody like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the preliminary resolution 2014-25 Vacating a Portion of Chicago Street.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Item C, Discussion and Possible Action on the Special 2014 Budget Allocation to the Fire Department.
Okay, before this evening is a request from the Milton Joint Fire Commission to create a special 2014 budget appropriation for the Joint Fire Department in the amount not to exceed $25,000. This item was brought to the Joint Fire Commission's attention at their last meeting in November 18th, in which the Fire Department came forward with a shortfall to their 2014 budget that would not allow them to pay their invoices and payroll for December of '14. So this is a situation in which they would need these funds in order to continue operations through the 2014 calendar. If Chief Lippincott has anything you'd like to add to that?
Not really, it's pretty straightforward. We had an excess amount of runs this year, we've seen a decrease in the amount of revenue that has come in, people are not paying their bills unfortunately, and so we are, we have a shortfall in the revenue side of our budget.
So we need a motion?
I just have a question. Yeah, and I'm not on the, I'm not on the Joint Fire Commission anymore. Is, am I remembering correctly that we had this issue last year, too?
We had an issue with the shortfall of the revenue caused by the Medicare lapses that we had, so we weren't able to make the building payment last time, last year. It has not happened in previous years where we've had to come back for money, but it's happened two years in a row now, and it's a sign of the times, I hate to say, plus the additional 165 runs that we've incurred this year has put a real binder on our payroll.
So this, this money would cover the building payment and everything else, or?
That's, that is correct.
Done?
Yes, Dave.
You know, I, we can discuss this, but we really don't have a choice in this matter. We can't not fund the fire department, but we need to make this contribution, the town needs to make it, but we need to decide with the help of city staff, department, fire department staff, township people, and the council, how to correct this so it doesn't happen again. It provides some kind of a fallback contingency clause or whatever for the commission and for the fire department to work on. I've seen a comment, and writing here, that you can't run this organization with a budget in excess of $700,000 that has variable revenue and variable costs without having some kind of contingency to pull back on. If we don't correct this, along with the contract we have, this contract expired with like Wes, that is really not doing that good a job, and is sticking to us pretty good on their rates compared to other agencies, we're going to be right back here next year.
Dave, I would agree with you, and I think, you know, we all know that we, we have to pay this money. I mean, we, there's, there isn't any way around it, but I guess I'm wondering if for our next meeting, we could have an agenda item that discusses some strategic planning for the Fire Department, and, you know, some guidance from the City Council. Is that something that you would be in favor of, Dave? Is that what you're, you're talking about?
Yeah, I think there's something where we've got to put together a plan. I mean, like I said, we've got to pay this money, we've got to fund it. But we've got to fix the structure so that Lauren is back into a corner again, and it shouldn't happen. You should have enough flexibility to take your items that come up and the shortfalls without jeopardizing the operations of the department, and we've got to help with that.
Right, I agree.
I agree, I don't think Lauren should be the one to have to worry about that.
No, I mean, that's why we have a council and a commission, and this is not all on Lauren's shoulders. And I hope that you're not getting the message that somehow we're laying this and throwing you under the fire truck, so to speak, because that, that's not- That is not my sentiment at all. It's more of how can we help and how can we be proactive in the future?
I think, I think we're getting a sense that this is maybe something we should discuss in the next council meeting?
Yes, yep.
Would you guys all agree that this should be a council item for next agenda?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I think that the suggestions listed were things that had been thought through and were going to be discussed at the commission meeting that's coming up. You know, I don't know if part of the discussion meeting and presentation from what occurs at the commission meeting. I don't know the timing, does the commission meeting take place after?
The commission meeting will take place before your next meeting.
So we can put it on the next agenda, these items, and then vote on the funding right now?
Yeah, my recommendation would be, if that's how you'd like to proceed, Dave's ultimately correct, we need to make that, we need to make this decision tonight whether to fund it or not, because the town will vote on the 8th, we'll meet again on the 16th, then the commission meets on the 17th. So the commission meets on the 17th.
Okay, so it's after?
Yeah.
Maybe we should wait till January, then get the first meeting?
And that, yeah, I, that's my-
About January, City Council.
Yes, I think the commission meeting is the key in this.
And I certainly have, you know, as outlined in the memo, these are, these are options or contingencies, however you want to call it, that I've outlined, that I've discussed some of them with the chief, discussed some of them with the town already, but would be happy to present those to the town, to the joint commission on the 17th, and work with, work with Fire Department staff, and work with our staff in order to bring those, to flesh those out, and bring those as a formal proposal to the council, whether that be December 16th, or January 6th, or January 20th. But that would be my, my recommendation.
Can we also, can we also include the town board? I think it's time for us, the City Council-
Like a joint meeting in January?
Yeah. It's, I, I think it's time for the, for both of us to get together and, and collect a solid commitment, make sure that everybody is on the same page so that we don't hear in a few months that, well, we can't- in a few months that, well, we can't do this, and, you know, maybe you could do that instead. I just feel like it's, it's actually been quite a while since there's been a joint meeting between the two, and I think that this is the opportunity to do it and hopefully get to some solid-
I, I think you're right, Linda, it's been a long time since we had one of those meetings. Last one, we had definitely with some fires, but we've got some things going, and I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Well, I'll make the motion that we-
Elena has something to say. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just want to weigh in here becau, on the timing, because one of the ideas is a idea that there, you might consider a referendum to increase the funding for the Joint Fire Commission. And what that would require is a resolution adopted by the common council, and that would have to be submitted to the county clerk by January twenty-eighth to get it on the April ballot. And being on the April ballot, there would be no, no cost, no extradition, no extra cost, but that's a timing issue that we have to consider if referendum is truly an option. It needs to be, that resolution would need to be adopted in time for me to submit this to the county clerk by January twenty-eighth.
How many meetings does it take to adopt one?
We can discuss it sixteen.
I just want to know, is it one meeting, or do we have to wait seven, three meetings, or I?
We have this mark.
Just so we know.
Yeah.
What we're talking about.
Mark, we have a question for you. You want to ask him?
If we have a resolution, hypothetically speaking, that we want something out of referendum, how many meetings do we need? Can we adopt a resolution in one meeting, or do we have to?
You can adopt a resolution in one meeting. Yeah.
Okay. That's what we need to know, because if we go that option, we gotta do it by January twenty-eighth.
They're talking about a resolution for, for what?
Referendum question?
To prepare a referendum question?
For the April ballot.
All right, and you want to be able to both consider and pass that at the next meeting?
Well, we just need to-
Or at a meeting?
How many meetings, Duke, does it take to get where we want to go?
That I don't, that I can't tell you.
How many weeks?
A resolution can be considered and passed at a meeting, yes, just like you did preliminary resolution tonight for the street vacation as an example.
Okay, everybody's questions answered? Are we gonna make a motion to fund the, fund the request?
So, just before Linda makes that motion, I just want to point out that we can't make a motion tonight that's contingent upon an action that will take place at a later meeting based on the funding. So if you make a motion tonight to approve this funding, you can do that, but you can't make it contingent upon a decision that's made later, so.
Right, right. And, and so I'll make the motion that we approve this funding for the Fire Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve-
Let me just add that it'll be an amendment to the two thousand fourteen budget. So we'll probably bring forth a formal resolution on the sixteenth memorializing this, since it is a, but it does have a budget impact, but you're amending the two thousand fourteen budget.
Okay. So we still have our motion and a second. So, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries.
So Dan, can you give us an idea of where this is gonna come from?
The city's contingency?
How it's gonna affect our-
The city's contingency fund?
Okay.
Sorry, it's good.
All right, we will then go on to item D of new business, discussion of possible action on property tax collections in two thousand fifteen and beyond.
Thank you. This was discussed real briefly at the council meeting, or at the P and F meeting back in November, and was asked for this to be placed on an agenda. So I have provided a staff memo that I prepared with the input of staff that outlines kind of the rationale behind this request. In short, I guess in summary, in short of, of rereading the entire memo, what we are faced with is, we're faced with a situation in which we have less staff members in City Hall than we did three years ago. We're down a full FTE, and we also have considerable amount of time that's, that's, that's left to work in the office during that time from those staff members who are available. With the situation in which the council and the, the organization moved to a PTO policy, folks are, are generally banking their PTO towards the end of the year in order to, to guard against an unpreventable situation in which they would need to miss work. That adds a double crunch in the sense that, that comes to the end of the year, we have one less staff person in the office than we did three years ago, and the folks that we do have here are in the office flats. Couple that with the holidays and just the general fact that the office isn't open as often as it typically is because of holidays, we have less staff people, the people that we have here less often, and the amount of time that the City Hall is open is less than it, than it is at other times of the year. So couple that with the situation in which we have property tax collections, in which we see a, a great number of folks come through the door and pay their property taxes here at Milton City Hall, and we remain the only city in the county that collects property taxes and processes those property taxes. It becomes a, a pretty substantial burden on staff that is, when, when there's less of us and we're here less often, in order to continue to process those payments. I can understand why somebody would think that this may be considered a reduction in service, but in all reality, I see this as, as somewhat of a net, if not a gain, for the citizens in the fact that the amount of staff time that is put into this detracts from our core services and also adds to our, our, our bottom line in the sense that there's either overtime or comp time generated through this, or folks are, are forced to not be able to take their PTO, which they can roll into their medical leave bank, which then becomes an unfunded liability, a future liability for the city. It is a nice service to the citizens of Milton, but as the, as the city continues to grow, it's one that is unsustainable for staff, that is diminishing in size with the community that's continuing to grow in order to keep up with, with this type of service. You know, we look at all times to, to focus on our core service provisions and focus on those things that, that we do best and, and that really make the, the city and the organization turn as it should. And this is one of those situations that I, it's been, brought to my attention that I'm not the first guy that came up with this idea. The previous administrator before me tried to do this, the previous administrator before him tried to do this. So I, I guess maybe third time's a charm, but it is one of those situations that's just not sustainable. We continue to have pressures put on us that we didn't have in the past, additional work put on staff that, that there's less of, and, and this is one of those expendable services that, you know, in a very short amount of time, I think the citizens probably won't notice that it's gone. One thing that we will continue to do is collect property taxes here at City Hall. That's a service that we will continue to provide if this does pass, and we will make a special trip to the county to drop those off. The real, the real issue comes with processing. It takes a tremendous amount of time to process those payments. When there's twenty-two hundred parcels in the community, and we see a good majority of those, ninety, some of those, ninety percent of those come through our door to the tune of about nine million dollars worth of property taxes, it's, that's a lot of, of data processing and information to be handled by one, two, or three staff members over a truncated month. So that, that is the request. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the, the folks in the council could have. Again, I understand that this may, may be perceived as somewhat of a touchy, touchy subject, but it's one that I think is, is an important conversation to have.
So how much did we pay out in overtime?
How much did we pay out in overtime in past years?
Yeah.
I do not have that information.
Okay, so it looks like we have an addition in two thousand thirteen of a youth apprentice that we didn't have in two thousand twelve?
Right. Yeah, we have a youth apprentice that works fourteen hours a week.
So we actually have more staff?
Than we did a year ago, but not as much as we did two, two years ago, yeah.
One of the things I like about Milton is that Milton does have a uniqueness, and I know it, it's, you know, easy to say, well, everybody else does it, so we should do it. I guess I am concerned for, for our citizens and their ability to pay here. I like offering that service. I, I guess I'm not a hundred percent convinced that we gain as much as maybe we lose in not offering the service, because this is a, this is a time of the year where our citizens get to interact with our city staff, where a lot of the times, this is the only interaction that they have, and I think it's really important that public service, that interaction, get them here to our building and, and keep them involved and connected. One of the things we know about communities is the more connected its citizens are, it's a better place to live, there's less crime, people are more likely to stay in a community that has that connectedness, so I guess I'm not convinced that this is the best way to go.
But you, you said we would still accept the payments here?
Correct.
So would they, would they, would they have a drop box, or would they give it to staff?
Both. And, and currently, that is available as well. Folks do use the drop box while at the former Shaw Building. Somebody comes after hours, but they could come in during regular hours and, and hand it off.
So they still have a chance to interact.
So would you give them a receipt then?
No.
I mean, not even saying we did take your payment?
Um, no.
But most people write checks anyway, don't they, or that, that they would have a record of it?
Right, yeah, if you drop it in the drop box, you wouldn't get a receipt anyways, yeah.
I, I understand, I agree with what you're saying. It's nice to have that uniqueness, but at the same time, I also know the holidays is a time when people want to use some of their, their time they bank to do their shopping and do stuff, and those are the people short here, and, you know, I don't think, you know, we have people enough like Dan and Al who have to take the payments, and we pay them a lot more to do other stuff, so.
I think that's more of a scheduling issue. I mean, obviously, at the county level, they schedule people to work, you know, during their busy season, so I guess I'm just not convinced.
Yeah. But I guess we're such a small office that you put, you put the burden on the people who have to say, okay, well, you can have off, but you can't have off. I can see-
Maybe alternate, you know?
And what do you, what do you ladies think?
Yeah, I, I think it's a waste of money, and, or, and, I just would just send it to the-
Well, I think that, I, I think it's a good thing to have people come in here, and I'm actually one of those people that I look for the receipt, and I'm always in here that day.
Maybe we could have you work?
Um, yeah.
I'd be more than happy to come and volunteer.
More than you think. Well, but then on the other hand, I totally understand that, you know, we do have some staff that are strapped, you know, and it's not even just because of the holiday, you know, it's, we only have so many people in the, in our office, and that's kind of the way that we, we've set ourselves up to be, is, you know, we gave ourselves a limited amount of staff, and now I think it's, we have to work with what we have, and if that means that we need to let somebody else take care of that, then that's what we're gonna have to do.
Do I have any motions that anybody wants to entertain? Dave, what do you think? What do, what do you think, Dave, on the property tax collections? What's your, what's your view?
Well, I've kinda got mixed feelings on it. The, uh, the taking of the, or the receiving of the collections by the city can, they can do that, is a, is a help to the citizens, they ought to go to court hours. I'm not sure how much delay is there to have the county process it rather than the city process.
How often do we take, how often would we take these payments down to the, how much would delay would there be from the time they give us the payment to?
Right, I, I think it would depend on volume, but we talked about it internally, and we'd be prepared to make a daily trip.
I, I think at the last committee I heard too, that there would be dates stamped in the city, so somebody paying on the thirty first or whatever would get credit for it this year.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yeah, that is correct, yep.
So we'll pay staff time to make an hour trip every day, from what date to what date?
Uh, it's December fifteenth through January thirty-first, is that correct?
Yeah, more or less.
Yeah.
And we could always drop it in the mail.
Maxine, you're shaking your head, is this the time you'd like to speak?
Well, you know, Milton's unique, just because Janesville, Madison do all those things, we're unique. We'll keep on doing what we meant to, why just because every other city does it, do we have to do it?
Well, I don't know if that's what we're saying. I don't think that's what they're saying.
Convenience to the citizens, and, and something they've always wanted.
But taking it here is, doesn't change their convenience.
But you said, this year you'll collect them and do it, but next year, they're on their own.
Well, I think, I think that maybe in a motion, we can say that, that if we're gonna do this year like that, that's something we could continue to take them and take them down, if that's acceptable to people, that way we still give that same service. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm torn, I'm just trying to facilitate here what might be best for us in the office and to take care of the time leave that people have.
And, and the county has updated their website in the last couple of years and included with this year's tax bill. I think historically, the city has even went as far as mailing paper receipts to people, and we get a big bank check for fifty or sixty parcels, and mailing those receipts to each of the residents, and that comes at a, at a cost, too, of about fifty cents per, per envelope. But the county updates daily, and we are going to include instructions that will allow people to view a receipt in real time, that they can access themselves whenever they want, and it'll save the city hundreds of dollars just in mailing of receipts that we receive via escrow.
Didn't you say that we also had just one computer that worked with this?
Yep, and as of right now, we've asked the county to, for this year, to try to give us a couple more licenses, and we haven't heard back yet. So my guess is we're gonna be stuck with two licenses for this tax collection year, and from what folks have told me, that they have to log out of everything, so they can't be in Castle, they can't be in their Outlook or anything else while they're processing these payments. And so, like, what had happened last year, I believe, is Michelle would literally take an afternoon every day and process some of the mail, take three or four hours out of her day, and she could be doing something else. And so, that, that's the crux of it. In that year end, we have a lot of things that change, like in payroll, tax tables change, pay rates change, people are enrolling in flexible spending, people are doing this, people are doing that, and we got PTO payouts and all this other stuff, and if we, there's only so much time in the day, and I think we do a really good job of keeping payroll very accurate, but I know that that has been a stressful point for the folks that do those day-to-day operations on top of trying to maintain everything else that's going on in the office.
Yeah, when, when I, when I came as administrator back in September, this was one of the first things that I heard about from staff, and it, it continued to hear about it, and still continue to hear about it, that this is a, this is a difficult, a very difficult time of year for that month and a half to do all of this work during that time. So, in listening to what I, what, what suggestions from staff, what I thought made logical sense, and, and it isn't only the fact that other communities don't do it, it's no other community does it, and they don't do it for all the same reasons that staff explained to me, because it's very difficult. So it's not just a matter of just because they don't do it, we shouldn't do it either, it's, there, there's good reasons to not do it, and, and that, that's why we brought this forward. So this is really a, a request, not only from, from me, but from, from everybody who's on the City Hall side of things. And that's the other thing that is tough about it. Tax collections only affect the City Hall side. The police don't have to have extra folks on staff, Fire doesn't have to have extra folks on staff, DPW doesn't have to have extra folks on staff, so it really only affects us, and it's a very small number of us that it affects, but that compounds that issue.
So what you're asking is for us to approve collecting the bills here, but then having the county process them?
Correct.
All right.
Collecting them in two thousand fifteen here. I mean, we're gonna- I mean, we're gonna still have an opportunity.
Yeah, in, in two thousand fourteen, we're gonna collect and process. It's, it's too late to change that. So in two thousand fourteen, everything will stay the same. But we, we wanted to bring this forward today, so when folks do start showing up in two weeks, we could say, "Hey, this year we'll collect and process it here, but in out years, you can still drop it off here, but just so you know, it won't be processed." And if, if they want that up-to-the-minute check, they can pay online, or they can go, um, right to the county and, and pay. Uh, but we wanted to let folks know in advance, similar to how we let folks know in the Shaw Building, that they had to come here to vote in two thousand fourteen, so...
Sure. Uh, okay, I'll make a motion that we change our tax processing to the county, but yet keep our collections here in the city so that residents still have that convenience.
And, and this isn't just for one year, but from, for all future years, right?
Well, another council could change it.
Well, until, until it's changed, but I mean, we have to change it.
They could change anything.
Yeah, they could change anything, but I mean, the idea of, of your motion is that this is up to the policy, we're gonna continue until it's changed.
Well, do we have to sign a contract with the county?
Uh, yeah, I believe so, but it won't be anything we have to do until next year.
So it would just be, I mean, do we know how long that contract would be for?
I can't remember. I think we just ask them to do it, and then they, every year we just pay them. I think once we sign it, until we tell them to stop doing it. And, and in two thousand fifteen, there's, there's...
All seconded. All right, we have a motion and a second, so...
I believe we just signed one contract, and then it goes until we elect to cancel it. I'm not exactly sure on all the logistics, but I did talk with, um, Denise Cole and, um, Vicki Brown, and they both reiterated to me this would not be the extra twenty-three, twenty-four hundred bills that the City of Milton has, would not be any extra burden on their staff. Um, the only di- difference people would see on their tax bills in two thousand fifteen is if they choose to mail it, which is still how a majority of the payments do come, is it would say, "Please make your checks payable to Rock County P.O. Box," whatever Janesville.
So in two thousand fifteen, people will have to write their checks to someplace different?
Right. If they write them to the City of Milton, all we will do is we will have a stamp that will say payable to Rock County Treasurer without recourse. So essentially, we're endorsing it over to Rock County. So if they, you know, that will probably happen for ten years, assuming we have the county handle collections, so. And I'm sure we'll get escrow checks for the better part of a decade. So, that stamp will get a lot of use in December and January, but not the end of the world.
But we don't know how much the contract will be for, if it can be increased, I mean, every year? I mean, at, at some point, it could cost us more money than...
It sounds like it's been that fifty-five cents for a very long time, so. And they estimate it somewhere between that twelve to fifteen hundred range would be the cost to the city. All just depends on the number of checks that come in. There's twenty-five hundred tax bills, and if you figure eighty percent of them write one check, that, that's kind of how you get to that math.
Okay, we, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the motion to have, uh, starting next year, the county collect, uh, or process the, the tax bills? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm gonna say no, because I'm, I don't know what the savings is going to be, so no.
Okay. Nancy, did you vote?
Um, I missed the discussion, so I don't feel qualified to vote, I'm just...
Okay, I just wanted to know so we can let, okay. So the vote passes four to one. We will then move on to item E, Discussion and Possible Action on Employee Handbook Updates.
Okay, uh, in your packet this evening, there is a memo by INGA that outlines, uh, that gives a summary, the outline of the changes to the employee handbook. As noted in the Personnel and Finance Committee discussion, bullet points four and five are removed from actionable items this evening. It is our intention to take those items to the Employee Action Team, actually this Friday, uh, so those, those two items can be vetted. Um, the Personnel and Finance Committee, uh, uh, made, made a motion to recommend to the council that they approve these changes. Uh, we certainly can have additional discussion if the council feels, uh, feels necessary though, or has any questions.
Any questions, anyone? And do I have a motion to accept the changes?
Yes.
Every second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the change in, in the Employee Handbook Updates. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Item F, amended discussion and possible action regarding Resolution two thousand fourteen dash twenty-six A, Resolution approving the lease supplement number one to master equipment lease agreement. Now, Howie?
Well, I, I can start. Hold on. Um, this, these are the lease agreements for the end loader and the skid loader for the two thousand fifteen budget. Uh, the lease agreements, uh, for the end loader?
The lease agreements are for the end loader and the skid loader for the two thousand fifteen budget. Um, with the acceptance of the lease agreements, we could obtain this equipment this year. There wouldn't be any payments until next year. Um, the lease on them, um, it was a, with the municipal discount, it actually allows us to get the two pieces of equipment for less than the price of what we estimated for one. So it is a, a fairly good deal for us. Um, there's also possibility on the end loader that there'll be a lease transfer every year where we may get a new end loader at the end of each year to replace the, the new one that we have. Um, they've also sent warranty information to Dan. It's, uh, one year where there's no parts or equipment on the equipment, so presently we actually budgeted an extra seven thousand dollars for our end loader, just because of the age of it being twenty-three years old. Um, so that came out of the budget and went back into, um, the cost of this equipment. So what we're looking for tonight is approval of the leases and, um, the ability to contact, um, the case company to, um, have them deliver the equipment.
The, the only thing I have to add is I did talk with the leasing company, and they would want, um, their first payments if we wanted to take possession of these two pieces of equipment in December. They would want payment this year, which I don't foresee that being a major issue, except we don't have the, um, budget authority to do that. So we, I found all this out today, so that's why there's not a budget resolution on it. Um, but we would need, uh, if we wanted possession of them, we would have to pay them this year. And with discussions with, uh, Howie on this, the disadvantage of waiting until January is if something happens to the two pieces of equipment that we are trading in, it could potentially increase the cost of the lease, because we would not get as favorable of a trade-in. So it'd be my recommendation that you authorize staff to, um, issue a check this year, and we'll bring forth a budget amendment, and then we'll just replace those dollars in two thousand fifteen with the money that we once spent from the, from, yeah.
What, what we need left of that?
We have a healthy fund balance. So that's where, that's where having, um, good fiscal policies like the city has come in handy for situations like this, that, that ultimately do save the citizens and the residents money and make prudent sense from a operational standpoint. Um, this is a, this is a good use of it, because we'll be just be replacing dollars that we're getting in two thousand fifteen, so it's kind of like a loan to ourselves. It's the best way to explain it.
With no interest.
With no interest.
So what kind of, what kind of amendment or what kind of motion are we looking for then?
Authorization on these two resolutions and to, uh, allow a, a budget appropriation for the first lease payment.
Mark is shaking his head, so you better...
No. On the agenda, the most recent agenda that I see here for tonight, you have on the agenda the two resolutions. One, which approves lease supplement number one, and one which approves lease supplement number two, which also incorporates the master equipment lease agreement and authorizes the signing of the various, many documents that go along with, with those two documents. So that's what you have on the agenda for this evening, in terms of if the council then decides that it, it's a good idea to authorize payment, um, in this year, then what I recommend is that that be, that come back to you at your next meeting with a resolution to so amend the general budget to provide for that, just as you will be doing in reference to the fire department, so that you'll have, be, because that's, when you amend the general budget, it needs to be in, in writing and needs, needs to be, uh, by, I think, two-thirds of the council, so it needs to be clear, and it's not noticed tonight, so, so, uh, we just need to be, we, that's a very important thing, so we, we...
That's why we have you here, Mark.
Yeah, that's, yeah, all right. So other than that, I just wanted to clarify, I, I'm not saying that's not a good idea, but just in terms of how it's presented, that I just recommend you act on these two resolutions that are on your agenda, and then the other can come before your next meeting.
So moved.
All right. So we're just, we're motion, we're moving on Mark's words and seconding on Mark's words, so I hope that you got that. Okay? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? All right, motion carries.
And just so the motion is clear for the clerk, is, was the motion to approve both five F and five G as shown on, on the agenda, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to item H, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding City of Milton Financial Contribution for Innovation Express. Al?
Thank you. As you may recall, during the two thousand and fifteen budget discussions, the Milton City Council agreed to fund the Janesville Innovation Express to the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. Um, at that time, uh, that the council approved that funding, uh, amount, uh, the services were not scheduled to change, so there would not be a reduction in service at that time. Since that time, uh, the City of Whitewater and the University of Whitewater have failed to fund the Innovation Express at their, at their same levels as they did in two thousand fourteen, uh, which then caused the City of Janesville to restructure that service, which did in, in fact, uh, result in, in a reduction of service to the City of Milton. Uh, because of that reduction in service, it was requested that this item be placed on the agenda this evening, so the council may reconsider their previous allocation to the Janesville Innovation Express if they so choose. Um, with that being said, we do have, uh, future transit director Rebecca Smith in the op, uh, in the audience this evening. If you have any questions about the service in two thousand fifteen, or the proposed service in two thousand fifteen, uh, and any questions about ridership. I did additionally hand out, uh, ridership information for two thousand fourteen, just note that obviously that's only for the eleven months that have existed in, uh, in two thousand fourteen to date, uh, and I, and I did send that to David Holm, uh, so, so folks are equipped with that information. Uh, but that is the, that is the reason for that being on the agenda this evening, is if the council so chooses, they can reconsider, uh, that, uh, allocation to the Janesville Innovation Express. In my memo, I outlined a number of options that, uh, the, uh, Janesville Transit System provided to me, uh, that could be potential, um, changes to the service if we so choose. Uh, but again, that's up to the council at this point, if they, if they would like to exercise any of those options, um, up to and including keeping the service the same or having to reduce service or eliminate the service altogether.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Doesn't the Janesville Transit System have smaller buses? It just seems like, and this, I've heard this comment from several people, actually, when they see the bus, there, you know, there's only a few people in this great big bus.
Oh, sure. Um, that is a question we do sometimes receive. Um, one thing that's important to know about the size of our buses, that size offers flexibility. The size buses we have allows for, uh, two wheelchairs to be present on, on the bus at the same time, um, safely placed online, um, safely placed on the bus. If you go to a smaller size, a lot of times you end up going down to just one wheelchair, and it's really important for our fleet management for that any of our buses to go on any route at any time, and so we want to keep that size bus. In addition, we're using buses we currently own to, uh, provide this JMW service, and if we would look to purchase a smaller bus, um, without the capital funding from the federal government, the cost would be extremely high.
Anybody else have questions?
What has happened today, among others things, is I've received five phone calls asking for the continued support of bus ridership. And, um, some of these are Freedom Graphics workers, uh, but they all desperately want to keep the buses running. I don't know if we can cut back any more than we have, and we have a pool of thirty thousand dollars to continue.
Are these all people who live in Milton that...
I believe so, because when we were paying, "And where do you live, and why don't you come and talk at City Council?", they do live in the area.
Okay, in the area.
And I, and I will say that we did receive calls today at City Hall as well, asking for a continuation of services, so...
But I think that, you know, five people voting is just outstandingly in favor. Everyone asking at least to continue what we have started. Many years ago, I had a bachelor uncle move in to the area, and he chose Janesville because he could get on the bus and go to the doctor, he could get on the bus and go anywhere. He could not see living in Milton, because there was no way of getting out, and that still is the case. If you cannot have the bus ridership, uh, buses available, even on a limited basis, we need them.
My two cents are major, in favor of keeping the option, I want to continue the approved funding.
The continuing the thirty thousand dollar funding, correct?
Correct.
Have we heard from the mayor on this?
Al, what?
Yes. The, the mayor has indicated since, kind of since day one, that he would be in favor of, um, continuing to fund the service at the same level as long as there was not a reduction in service. Because there has been a reduction in service, he is therefore, um, not in favor of continuing the service at this funding level. His belief is that if there's a reduction in service, there should be a reduction in fee.
Unfortunately, this is being done piecemeal. We wait for Whitewater, we wait for Janesville, and being done piecemeal, when we have committed and they're paying afterwards, I feel that we should keep the thirty thousand dollar commitment that we have made.
And we didn't make a contingent upon other municipalities. I don't even think we can do that, right? Make a contingent upon other municipalities paying a certain dollar amount?
Well, I thi- I think if we have, I think if we've had this many people call and speak out that we funded this, I think we need to honor that, because they depend upon it.
Thank you. I mean, this may not be the most perfect system, but we have agreed on it.
But it's keeping a lot of people employed, and I would bet it's, these people are spending local dollars, and, and maybe it's, their money is not all spent in the City of Milton, but I bet it's all spent locally at a, at a pretty good rate, so...
And these are Freedom Graphics people that were voting today.
Right. So I'm in favor of keeping the funding at the level we already committed to.
How, how much is the fare? What is the bus fare?
So if someone's coming, um, from Janesville wanting to go just to Milton, so if they're headed to Freedom Graphics, that's two twenty-five. If someone's coming from Milton wanting to go to Whitewater, that's three dollars. If somebody's in Janesville and wants to get all the way to Whitewater, that's four fifty. And then for individuals that are elderly or disabled, then they do, are eligible for a half, um, half-price fare. I should also mention, um, individuals who know they're going to be riding frequently can take advantage of purchasing a ten punch card, and then they receive a discount.
Now, what, what's the prospect of Whitewater... Now, what's the prospect of Whitewater fully funding or giving options? I mean, what was the reason for cutting? Because there was not enough people using that service in their estimation?
Sure. The City of Whitewater did eliminate their funding, and they felt that the need was not significant enough to continue their funding. Then the university, UW-Whitewater University Administration, has a general policy that they would allocate funding to the same level as the City of Whitewater. So when City of Whitewater eliminated funding, thus UW-Whitewater eliminated funding.
I think it's the right thing to do to continue the funding.
I agree.
I think that we should, too. We have people that are depending on this, and we, this was a, this was a big jump for Milton to do this whole project, and it's, I don't want to go backwards.
Well, and I also think in economic terms, if we have businesses that may want to locate here, having a transportation system is a plus in marketing the City of Milton.
Plus Blackhawk Campus is going to expand more, and I think it's important that we, you know, if they're going to be a partner with us, we have to help them bring as many people to their campus as possible, so I agree with you guys.
Has, have we reached out to UW-Rock County at all?
That's not where the tour station is.
Well, but I'm sure that we have a lot of students here in Milton that go to U-Rock. And so if we had, if there was a service, if part of our service was to go there, I think that that would be a benefit to provide.
I suspect a lot of those kids are kids that live outside the City of Milton but are in our school district.
Yeah, one thing I can mention, UW-Rock County is a destination within the City of Janesville Transit System. So if somebody rides the J M W, gets to Janesville, they can then get a transfer to get them to the south side UW-Rock County. So you wouldn't necessarily have to provide bus service specifically to Rock County. We have that with the City of Janesville already.
Well, I think it sounds like we all agree, or most of us agree to fund it, so does somebody want to make a motion that keep?
And as a motion that we owe our budget in thirty thousand, we have already committed to.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, so we go to item six, general items. The next meeting date is December sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Are there any, the mayor's not here, are there any alderman reports tonight?
I just wanted to make that formal request that we put public comment on our next agenda so that the council can have a discussion on that.
Do we need a motion for that, Mark, or can we just do, we don't, okay, we just have to...
But it'll be documented in the minutes that the request is made, correct? Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank Howie and Snowplow guys and gals and everybody that works for our Public Works Department. I think they did a great job in our early snowfall and going back out to get the leaves after work, so thank you. It's those, you know, those services that we all appreciate that make Milton a great place to live.
And if we're thanking people, I'll also thank the Milton P D, that I have been sharing the unfortunate happening of an untimely death, that they have done a very, very nice job of taking, of taking care of the people that were around and surviving, so thank you very much.
And then I also just want to let everybody know that the, our Marketing and Events Committee has come up and with the name for the Merchant Row area, and that area will now be designated as Junction Square. So that is our new, our new name for that particular downtown area, and the committee was real excited that, that we now have that first step in place. And the other thing that I just want to mention to everybody is there is a survey online, and you can also pick it up on City Hall for the Parks and Recreation Commission to look at. We're gonna, in January, we're gonna be looking at what types of improvements and, and anything that the citizens are looking for, and what they use, and things that we can do to help improve the whole system. So I just want to encourage everybody to go online and fill that out so that we know what everybody wants.
Any other alderman reports? All right, we'll go to staff reports, see administrator.
Well, that was a nice segue. All the person class stole kind of where I was gonna go. That's fine, that's fine. We have, we've really re-engaged the Downtown Development Advisory Committee, and that group has become a lot more active, and I'm very happy to see one individual who's really stepped up and become the chair of that committee, the individual is Linda Labor, and she is a very active and well-spoken and great leader of that group, and I really do believe that she will, that her energy will help provide that group better direction and better effectiveness than what we see in the past, a better job than I could have done. So I was very pleased to see that she kind of stepped up and is taking a leadership role in that group, because I think that group has been re-engaged in a way that it may not have been for a while, and we're really gonna focus this year on Junction Square, similar to what we did in Goodrich Square last year. So we're meeting, is it the third, fourth Friday, fourth Friday of the month? Attendance has continued to go up at each one of those meetings, and I'm really looking forward to that group really doing some big things in 2015. So it's been one of those things, I, for ten years, I've worked in Janesville on downtown development, and I can tell you, in a matter of three meetings, the tenor and tone of that meeting has changed to so much more of a productive fashion than probably the ten years worth of downtown development that I did in Janesville. So that's, again, something that the citizens of Milton should be proud of.
Okay. Anything else, Al?
No.
Okay. Director of Public Works?
We're just working on a couple maintenance projects. The guys are out trimming the street trees and sidewalk trees, it's just for maintenance because they're hitting trucks, and we're getting some complaints and stuff. So they're all around town doing that. There's a sand pile at the garage, if someone has ice on their sidewalk, at, next to the yardways bin. And the lights are now on at the sledding hill at night for when we have snow. We had to do a repair on them, but they're working now for night sledding, so.
It's like the awesome stuff, the sand pile and the sledding hill, that is like, that's the coolest thing tonight.
When our question, like the ice skating rink, when do we have plans to maybe?
Well, it's actually, you know, it's kind of good news, bad news, we're all set up to do it, but it has to get colder, so. Because it's, so, because it's supposed to be...
We can wait a few weeks, Howie.
Well, it's the up and down, you know, it's supposed to be forty degrees the whole weekend, so. So we're kind of, gotta wait a while, so it's gonna be probably at the earliest, close to, close to Christmas, before there's ice.
Yeah, that's, and that's usually, when we get to the Christmas break for the school, that's really a good time, if that's what we, if the weather permits to get it, because that's when the kids come out, so.
How much salt do we have? Are we doing good with our supply?
We're all right with our supply, as far as, you have to order it a long time, and it's different, you have to order it quite a ways in advance to make sure you have it, but we're also trying to use the brine this year to cut down on what we have, but it's already ordered for the whole year for what we need, so.
Okay. Chief, please?
I go before the Wisconsin Accreditation Board on Friday morning to make a formal pitch for accreditation. The gentleman that was the head of the accreditation group is going to go before me, so as soon as I go in there, I think I'll have an idea of what's gonna happen, but I don't see any problems with us getting accredited, so I'll have that news. I'll send it out in an email Friday afternoon to everybody.
Super, thank you. Director of Library?
Work continues on our fundraising campaign, a lot of visits still to businesses and individuals. We did just recently get another ten thousand dollar pledge from a business that will be announced. And then this winter, we are doing some preparations for some more outdoor activities for the community, including ice skating rink, a storytime skate, and working with the Rock County Leisure Services to offer some outdoor activities outside of the library, so more on that later.
Good. Chief of the Joint Fire?
I don't know how to follow up, I've already asked for, so I think I'll let it go tonight.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Just want to remind everyone that nomination papers and registration, campaign registration, all of that is now available in the clerk's office, or in City Hall, and if you want to stop by and pick it up, do that.
Thank you. City Treasurer?
Right before this meeting, we sent everything that the county needs to print tax bills, so I don't know where we are in the queue, but...
Really, you're right on time for that.
We, Carrie worked very hard to make sure that everything was buttoned down in terms of the special assessments and the garbage charges, because there were, we changed, we changed how we looked at it, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan, sorry.
I want to thank all of the department heads and staff for their reports. And do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, my motion is second. Yes, Dave?
You realize you missed the thirty-five minute deadline, so you don't have...
I know, that's because you wanted me to allow extra discussion tonight, so. So you have to take partial blame with me, so. But thanks for reminding me, I try to, if I get this next time, I'll do, I'll make sure I work on that. All right, so all those in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? All right, motion carries.